The special meeting will begin here in the District Board of Education Friday, July 2022.
President Black.
Here.
Vice President Stapleton Gray.
Here.
Board Member Blanchard.
Here.
Board Member Clark.
Here.
Board Member Chutain.
Yes.
Okay, the board has no action and closed session. First, items to approve each.
I believe we approve each agenda.
Second, all the papers are handled. Okay. So we have three independent action items. First, if an independent contractor agreement is in effect.
Thanks, thank you President Black. So this item is a contract for professional development. Marie Williams is bringing this to the board. And while we probably could have brought this at the August board meeting, I really try and quote fidelity during contracts before services rendered. So this is a review and actual.
Do you have any questions?
My only comment is that this training is going to occur on October 12th. And it says that this assessment is going to be used this fall. So that I wonder if the teachers will, what their timelines and how or period they're going to feel, we're just coming in October and still trying to assess these kids in the first semester.
If you'd like, I can ask Marie Williams to, I don't have the answer to that question right now, but I can have Marie Williams to provide that answer to the board if you'd like in a separate meeting.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Who would we affirm this counter? Second. Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have a resolution confirming the district's commitment to fiscal solvency.
Thank you. So this is a resolution that the county has asked us to, or asked the board to pass. The board did agree in our previous meeting to the $2.5 million ongoing budget reduction. And so this is a resolution for the county, and I'm going to turn over to Douglas Cranster to give any more detailed information.
Thank you. Yes, so again, this is really just a technical resolution to affirm what the board approved in the adopted budget that was approved in June. And again, it just reiterates the need to cut 2.5 billion. Again, the county did request a separate resolution to make sure that the district is aware that that 2.5 right now, absent any additional revenue, that 2.5 million will be cut for 1920. Do you have any questions?
It seems like this is the same discussion from a year ago, although you weren't here, but I don't understand the urgency. When is the exact date that this needs to be sent to the county?
This needs to be sent to the county by, pretty much, the beginning of August, because it's a condition of whether or not they would approve the district's budget. Right now, they're leaning on not approving the district's budget unless a resolution is done, done so affirming the 2.5 million that was adopted by the board in June. So it's just literally the resolution, it's like a trailer resolution linked to the budget that was already adopted. Even though the adopted budget had, you know, reiterated the need of 2.5 million dollar cuts, this is just a resolution affirming that fact.
Right, but pretty much the beginning of August is not an exact date.
Sorry?
You said pretty much the beginning of August, that's not an exact date.
Okay, I would have to contact the county in terms of when they would need it. They would, really what they wanted to buy was, in the perfect world, would be to accompany the adopted budget. That didn't happen, because I figured since the $2.5 million was in the adopted budget, that they would need a resolution. But after talking with them, they said, oh, we would really like a resolution. So I'll find that specific time on that one. Just really, they have 45 days to either approve or disapprove, or, yeah, approve or disapprove the district's budget. So they need that resolution in time before they approve it. So really, it may be earlier, but they needed to make their decision by August 19th.
Charlie. So I have a couple of questions about timeline here. We don't actually have a problem with the budget for the coming school year or the year thereafter. We have adequate reserves to cover those two years. And so effectively, we're having to make some decisions that really have to do with the third year out. Now, I understand that to make a timely decision that affects the budget in the third year out, we have to start thinking about that and what those decisions will be. It's pretty difficult to even contemplate $2.5 million cuts when we don't know what the state is going to do. We just don't even have any certainty about that. So I think the first question, the more specific question I have to do as I wrestle with this question of timeline is, we will see the unaudited actuals in, what, September?
Correct, the first meeting in September.
Yeah, and so that will change the picture again. So, you know, and I don't think you're asking us to make any actual decisions until after we've seen the unaudited actuals. But I would be surprised if the county didn't give us, at least until then, to make some decisions. I think the timing you're proposing is to have a serious discussion, make some decisions that would affect the first interim.
Correct, I mean, pretty much, this is, really, this resolution is just like a trailer document associated with the 2.5 million that was in the adopted budget. So for them to approve the budget, they want this resolution to make sure that there's no gray area in terms of what was contained in the budget.
But as soon as we see the unaudited actuals, the dollar amounts change.
Oh, yeah, exactly, that number's going to be changing constantly. After every closeout, any information from the state, any other factors, but based on the current assumptions in the 1890 budget, right now, in order to have our minimum reserves by the end of the third year, we would need to, you know, cut the 2.5 million.
Right, so what they need is a piece of paper from us right now that is essentially, I don't want to say it's a meaningless promise, but it's meaningful.
Formality. It's really formality.
It's a formality.
Formality.
But in terms of the dollar amount, the $2.5 million, that number seems to me to be fairly meaningless number in that it's what we have to work with right now, that number. The only thing we know about that number is the real number will be different from that number.
Exactly.
And I'd like to point out that the real number is different from that number already because $2.5 million is not balanced budget. It's far short of what we ultimately need to come up with the balanced budget. So it could be that it would only be 2.4 million in order to meet our reserves three years out. But cutting to 4.5 million would not be in order in any case, because that's just wasted on the way towards.
That assumes that revenues don't change. I mean, one thing we know is that in all of these budgets, in all of these projections, we have to be conservative, so we have to take account of rising costs, and we do do that. These are all budgets based on making the most conservative assumptions about revenues. They're budgets based upon allocations. We don't always spend up to our full allocation. So, and it's been my observation that when we see, when we see the unaudited actuals, picture generally improves from what we think it is. So I'd love to see those.
Now, remember, when it's the unaudited actuals, anything that falls to the bottom, additional funding, that is just really, in a sense, one-time funding. So the unaudited actuals will not impact the structural deficit that's in the adopted budget. It would just kind of move up on how much, you know, what available resources are to continually attempt to spend. So while the unaudited actual is definitely important, it wouldn't change the structural deficit that's projected.
Awesome. I guess I'd like to paint a diagram or pick a picture here, Charlie, and note that the three of us who were on the board that you downed us, that funded 9% reserve was a good idea. One of the issues is that there is some sort of budgetary sleight of hand when we're borrowing from a budget from CTE. That's going to have to be addressed. We'll run out of money to borrow from that, whether or not we decide to pay it back. And I don't notice the budgets going forward really anticipate much in the way of, you know, if there are raises to be awarded to staff. That's changing the numbers in the wrong direction towards solvency. So I would say getting away with saying, well, at least do this much, is probably a pretty sober conservative approach at best. We should probably anticipate it's going to be tougher.
I am happy to give the county this formality that they need in order to go forward with analyzing our budget. And I agree with what's been said. I think that the state has passed on some of the costs to schools that are not, that have no revenue string to fund them, that they put us into a, an impossible situation. I think that we are going to see these cuts, really severe cuts, and we'll see even more severe cuts if the community is not willing to renew the parcel tax. That level is going to sunset in the next several years, and we have to at least renew that, if not increase that, you know, on top of the funding that people are paying now. So it's more and more the responsibility of our local community to fund our schools. That's what the state has told us. I will point out that in the last paragraph, whereas in the resolution, it says, "The Board of Education recognizes that this projection may increase or decrease depending on final state revenue allocations or any other changes to the multi-year assumptions, prior year ending fund balance, enrollment changes, et cetera." So even within this resolution, it acknowledges that this 2.5 million is no more than a strong number.
I'd also like to point out that the next one's perfect, which is going to be approved itself, but there's a double cap. We should probably take that out.
One word addition that might address Charlie's concerns in that now therefore be resolved, adding the word net, you know, adopt specific net expenditure reductions. We see it in revenues increase, for whatever reason. If we come in to $2.5 million below, as opposed to $2.5 million from the current spending, so if we say specific net expenditure reductions, it solves the problem of, we got more money, but we still need to try that.
So it's a doc-specific net expenditure reduction?
So is it possible just to drop the 2.5 and say the necessary cuts to get a possible certification? I understand why, how's it being locked down at a certain number to say, well, if we're going to make the cuts necessary, it requires.
When speaking with the county office, they actually wanted a list of, I think, well, we don't have a list, we have a target number with S. bias. So they said, yes, that would be acceptable, having a target number that's really tied to your adopted budget. So at this point, they would need a number, a target number. Now that can, you know, that change. And I sent them a copy of the resolution, so they go, the 2.5 million is in there, and it's subject to, you know, to changes based on either information from the state or our own changes in our information. So right now, they're saying, yes, based on my last discussion with the 2.5 million, or an identified number.
But the 2.5 gives us compliance, so they just drop the 2.5, so we're in compliance with basically the same thing.
Well, okay, maybe they didn't.
I just don't like 30 dollars. Maybe they didn't understand your question.
Instead of saying a specific amount, 2.5 million, or we'll make the necessary cuts to have over 3% reserve three years out. That suffices what our responsibility is. Do they want more? Sure. But as required is a whole different thing. And like I say, I know you're new, but this whole conversation happened last year, and we made a resolution to make cuts, and we never made it. So it's just, what is this for? I'm serious.
No, no, I understand, no, I understand. What this is for is to be, really, to provide the county assurance that the district knows that needs to, right now, make 2.5 million dollars of cuts for 1920 based on what the adopted budget. So now, now I'm thinking, you know, at first I thought it was a formality, but now with this additional discussion, I'm, it's, now I definitely, you know, see why the, why the county wants to see this, to make sure that every, you know, that the district and the board are aware of what is in the budget that's stated, 2.5 million dollars.
We already did that, why did we have to reiterate? We already did that just a few weeks back.
Because that's what they requested, and they're, and that's what they're approving the budget. So, I mean, you can, I mean, if the board wants to say, you know, as he did, amend it, and then we can send it to the county, and if for some reason that doesn't fly, then we would have to bring another resolution in order for them to feel comfortable approving our budget, because right now, they're saying, without that resolution, without the proposed resolution, it would be difficult for them to approve that budget.
Where's that letter? The board has to send the letter.
No, there was no letter. It was discussions, being proactive and sort of, okay, here's our budget, are you comfortable with the budget, you know, in the narrative stating 2.5 million dollars?
Well, it might be nice to get something in writing, and them saying that they need the exact number, because I don't really see the difference. They say that we're going to make the necessary cuts, because we all know we have to be.
And I did talk with them, when I talked with them, it was just really of the understanding that we need to have 2.5 million dollars, saying, okay, well, we don't have a list, so we'll put the 2.5 million in the resolution, and then come up with a list for first interim. Okay, that's fine. I did not ask them, do we need the dollar amount? I said, well, instead of a list, again, they, at first, they wanted a list of reductions. I go, well, we don't have that, we have to put that together, but we have a target amount that's in the budget. Okay, that's fine. But now, if the board wishes to not have the 2.5 million and just have a blanket statement, then amend it, and then we'll send it to the county and see if it applies.
That's what I replied.
Okay.
Would, maybe as a clarification, would it, would it help instead of saying 2.5 million in this whereas, to change and say, "On going expenditure reductions as stated in the adopted budget"? So, because, either way, you get to the same.
2.5 million in two places.
It's in on the second page as well.
Second page. It's actually, the 2.5 in the whereas is not as significant as 2.5 in the.
Yeah, thank you, it was.
So would it have said, "The Board of Education will develop prioritized and adopt specific net expenditure reductions for the 1920s where amounting to the target amount"
Oh, that was in the adopted budget.
"...illustrated in the board-approved budget." Would that be okay? I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Charlie. So I agree with what Paul said, is that the 2.5 million that's in the whereas simply says what we all know, what was in the adopted budget, and so that's fine. The 2.5 million that's in the therefore be resolved actually commits us to a dollar number that is not the right dollar number, because it will be a different dollar number. So that's the one where I think I agree with Jacob, where it should simply say, "The Board will qualify prioritize and adopt specific expenditure reductions for 2019 and 2020, sufficient to maintain a 3% reserve over a three-year period." End of resolution.
I was about to worry, did you get that?
Yes, what I have is, "The Board of Education will develop prioritized and adopt specific net expenditure reductions for the 1920, sufficient to maintain 3% reserve over a three-year period."
Thank you.
And then take the rest of these out.
You're actually ready to.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be 2021, because 21, 2021, 2022 was four years out?
Yeah, so right now, if we did the 2.5 million, it would, right now, last through 21, 22.
But that's four years out, we've never been required to make any kind of commitments for four years.
Talking about the 2019.
The last word has, section says, 2021, 2022.
Right, Jacob, I think the problem is that we're not talking about this year's budget, we're not talking about the 2019, 2020.
That's three years out.
From 2019, 2020.
Budget being considered, next year's budget.
I think that's after this year.
So I'd like to just sort of go back to the wording I suggested, which is sufficient to maintain a 3% reserve for a three-year period. We don't need the years.
Yeah, I guess it's still talking about four years out of it.
There, yes, because it's three years from the time that the cuts were made, it's that three years from now.
Well, that's not in four, why not go to five or six? I mean, we're required to just say what we're going to do three years out of it.
We're talking about the budget under consideration and the subsequent three years. We're not considering the 1890 budget, we're considering the 1920 budget, that's the debate we're working on.
Right, so in the middle of July, we're talking about what we're going to do next school year, 1920. It just rushed.
Well, it rushed in part because we have to, we have to develop cuts in March, get way through the next school year.
Yeah, that's a long time, but March is like, what, seven months already?
March is like tomorrow, while it's really debating some serious upheaval in this district, some serious changes in staffing, allocation of all sorts of resources, it's soon.
It gives us the proper time to plan accordingly, rather than, you know, have it in person. But right now, we have time to plan, plan accordingly.
Can we get some, let's see if anyone's ready?
Sure.
Do we have any comments?
The board, this is only tangentially related, but obviously, Proposition 13 is part of what's put the situation in place. You may not be aware that approximately 800,000 signatures have been submitted for something called the Schools and Communities First Measure, which is a measure to reform Proposition 13 around commercial property taxes. And this would require the commercial property of large size to reassess every two years, generate substantial revenue. If it qualifies, it requires 800,000 ballot signatures to qualify, if it qualifies, it will be on the 2020 ballot. Basically, this doesn't change what you do today, but I just want to make sure you knew that that's in process. As an example of the impact of that, I looked up the assessed land values of Golden Gate Fields, it's $170,000 an acre, whereas for recently sold property in the city of Albany itself, it's $1 million acres, and it's defined by about a factor of 21. Since I moved to Albany in mid-'90s, Golden Gate Fields has appeared to change hands a number of times, but they sell the company that owned the property rather than selling the property itself, so it's not been reassessed. So this measure should pass, correct by that, it takes back to more of the funding we had in the '60s, when our school districts were great nationwide. So hopefully, everybody will work towards that. The passage of that measure, I imagine, will be a lockdown, drag-out brawl, given the all the forces involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Cameron's here.
Indeed, we do know about that, the Schools and Communities Act, and everyone, everyone's sitting at this table, except Doug, I don't know about, has signed that petition, so we have added our signatures to give that on to the 2020 ballot and voiced our support. Thanks for bringing it up, we can't talk about that too often, because everybody needs to be aware of that, and hopefully, we can really activate the Albany community to work toward passing that.
Okay, are we ready to take notes?
Hi, I'm Jessica Cross, I'm a parent at Cornell Elementary School and Albany Middle School. I was also involved in the Budget Committee Budget Work Group over the last year, and I guess my question was about whether there is going to be a renewed process around community involvement. There was a lot of input given, and then input about who would be involved in the work group and these sorts of issues. And I guess I'm concerned that we avoid getting into a situation where even though we have all this time, we make the decisions at the last minute, we don't have policies governing how decisions are made about new staffing, anything of that nature, new expenses, and we make new commitments all the while, and then in the last minute, we have to do it, and then it'll definitely be done through cutting staff and cutting programs, and all done through that, and maybe there are other options. So I'm just concerned about whether there's a plan to have an active process beginning, so that we're not just making this commitment kind of in a void, and then I guess we'll scramble around as the date comes near. So I'd like to hear thoughts about that. Thank you.
So we need to, our final decisions around specific budget reductions prior to December. I've tentatively scheduled for both the board meetings in August, for a submitted amount of time, for the board to discuss work priorities, budget priorities. Staff will then need some time to look at the specifics using those priorities where the reductions would need to be made. And then I would provide in the staff report, probably sometime in November, what our plan is for the reduction. Because 2.5 million is, it's a lot of money. We're going to have to look at every place that we possibly can reduce that will as much as possible minimize impact to students. So right now, tentatively, I've scheduled for both August board meetings, a review and discussion item, budget priorities for the board can, and the public can weigh in on the priorities before my staff and I really look at the specifics of what the cuts need in terms of coming up with a budget reduction plan.
While I'm speaking, while I can ask the question, it's a follow-up to Jessica's question.
Let's get on this.
Hello there, it's Albany resident. I think the previous speaker made a very good point, that you need to get this out to the public as quickly as possible. I think anyone that does the school board meetings know about this structural budget deficit we've had for a number of years, and now it's time to pay it out. And I think the public needs to know of this soon enough, so that we can get a parcel tax increase in the 2020 elections. It's an opportunity for the public to have the knowledge and incentive to pass a parcel tax increase for their schools. Thank you.
Yeah, so just as a follow-up to Jessica's question, several months ago, we decided to constitute a board-appointed budget study committee, and we haven't actually done that yet, and I know there's reasons, largely having to do with the fact that our CEO has taken a different position, but we. But we have now a new permanent CEO who will be joining us. And it seems that this is the right time to really move forward with that budget study committee, so there is an input process. Well, we certainly have to discuss this at board meetings and public session. I think the whole point of having a board-appointed budget study committee was that that would be subject to Brown Act, and those meetings would be public meetings also. So that provides another form in which to have those discussions.
Jacob?
Yeah, I was on the committee that Jessica Cross spoke about as well, and I'm sure that information from the survey, the results that we got back are somewhere. So as far as like when I started from scratch, you know, I can remember some of the themes that kept coming over and over again as far as cut at the top, you know, cuts as far away from the fashion as possible, so we could still get input from the public, but we shouldn't disregard all that time we spent gathering information before. So I'm requesting that that gets to the board as soon as possible. So if we do reach out to the public, which we should, we can say, look, this is what we already received as far as input. Could you please add something?
So Charlie, I alluded to it, it was in a public meeting on June twenty-ninth, but Ms. Jackie Kim, an Albany resident and an Albany parent, has been appointed as the new chief budget officer. She comes from West Contra Costa, and similarly, she had a budget position there. So we have a CEO as of, I guess, the appointment or approval on the twenty ninth of June. I don't know where she is in terms of coming up speed, but Alan's position has been filled and there is a CEO.
She starts off on A.
I'm Jen, I'm a teacher here, and I'm also a parent of a high schooler. I just want to speak to the survey that you guys are talking about. Every single person I talked to thought that survey was very, very difficult to answer in a meaningful way. So I'm just not sure how accurate, I know it's a place to start from, I certainly wouldn't want you relying on that survey. Because when it says, what do you think we should cut, and everybody says, I don't even know what the options are. Then there's a problem with the way that survey was written, and we're going to have to fix it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Iris Miranda. I'm a parent of a soon-to-be ninth grader at Albany High School. I'm actually at work in order to make it here. I realize that you guys are calling this a special meeting, but I feel like it was almost a secret meeting. I had to run and have my daughter meet me here so that we could run her to lunch and get me back to work. It's really profoundly not well-done, the fact that you did it on a Friday at noon. I feel it's very unprofessional, and it wasn't even considered the fact that it's summer, and I don't appreciate that. The fact that you're cutting two and a half million dollars and considering that, I came to several board meetings before the school year that out regarding cuts to special education. And I just want to make sure that we don't, I want to reiterate what the previous speaker said, that we just simply cut and not know where we're cutting. And that you go to that specific place of special ed, I would really request that that not be considered. That was really torturous for those, for all of those departments, and it's very hard for that community. So I ask that you not make cuts there. I don't know what we're gonna do and whether this new CEO, how much is he getting paid? If he's gonna start on Monday, if you can disclose how much he's making, maybe we can ask him to take a reduction before he even starts. Thank you.
Uh, one question, Ms. Jackie Kim, she will be starting on Monday. And note, in terms of this meeting, the reason this meeting is now is not because of setting any sort of budget priorities. It's not what we're doing today. We're not changing any numbers that weren't already hashed out as here are targets, et cetera, at previous board meetings. And subsequent board meetings will absolutely talk about what we ought to prioritize on cuts or expenditures or sources of revenue, et cetera. The primary reason for this meeting is the item we haven't yet gotten to, which is the question of whether or not the district should remain in the city charter. So this, this isn't a forum in which we're gonna talk about specific cuts or priorities of any programs. We do have to respond to the county, apparently. We do have to reiterate what we've told them already. We do plan to be in budgetary compliance. That's one of the other things we're doing, but we're not deciding anything on cuts.
Hi, Karen DeHart, ATA co-president, and I just want to reiterate the previous speaker, what she was saying, because I just learned at this meeting. I'm representing a large stakeholder group in Albany, and I didn't get any messages, there are no indications on the website that this special meeting was taking place. And regardless of what is happening here or not happening here today, it heightens everybody's awareness of what we're facing. And so, in the name of transparency, was there something more that could be done to publicize this meeting so that people feel at least that they were welcome to a public forum? Because I had to whip over here and, you know, change, alter my plans, and, you know, that's all well and good, and I get that, you know, action is gonna be taken on actual cuts, but still. We care, we're very interested in being those that give input to the system and, like, it just caught us unaware, anyway. So I, is there really only a twenty-four hour notice that was necessary, and people outside of Albany were not aware even though we are employed within the school district? And so, it'd be nice to know what those parameters are. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry that this country of awares, as Cross stated, the purpose of this meeting was not to discuss the budget. It's really, we're getting off the topic by talking about specific cuts and discussing the budget at all. The two and a half million dollars is a pre-existing number, it's not dictated by any choice of ours, it's dictated basically by state law, by county. And the county is just asking us to pass a resolution in order for them to approve the budget that we already passed. So really, what we're here for today is the discussion about taking the district out of the city charter. And I believe that it was Jacob's request when we had it as a special meeting, get it on the agenda as soon as possible. When we get to that agenda, I don't know, we can discuss why we're trying to do that today. But in terms of this resolution that we're discussing right now, it's not intended to be a budget discussion. We certainly aren't going to make any budget decisions today. It's just a question of passing a resolution that will give the county what they want in order to approve the budget that's already been passed on board in a public, regular session earlier.
Yes, can the superintendent describe how meetings are noticed?
Yes, we, we posted on the website, there is also email last week goes out about the board meetings. Even though this is a special board meeting that requires a twenty-four hour Brown Act notice, I believe we posted the, the agenda early. We posted it on Wednesday afternoon, so while we had until Thursday afternoon, we did it a day earlier. I tried to add it in today if available. And it is, it is on the official website.
I'm Michael Cavanagh, I'm the father of, well, starting soon, a tenth grader at Albany High. I appreciate the changes that were made to the, to the resolution. A lot of it really seems kind of silly to me because state law requires all public agencies to adopt a balanced budget. So you're saying we're going to do what the state law requires us to do. The amount of money is troublesome, I mean, in many ways. I'm not in favor of putting off difficult but necessary decisions, but I think it needs to be done in a deliberative way. And I agree with Jessica that this needs to be something that is thought about. In some case, in, in some ways, I almost think that rather than constantly making little nicks and cuts on a budget, or make nicks and cuts in this case, that you start over, start over from zero, what are we required to do? How can that money be spent, and how does that fit with our priorities? I mean, at some, sometimes you get lost in the numbers and forget what your priorities are. But I think the community, including the staff, the teachers, you know, all of the board members, parents, everyone needs to be involved in determining what the priorities are and how we move forward, and I hope that will happen.
Thank you. Um, Jacob?
Yeah, you were saying earlier that I was willing to request if you guys see the charter issue be on the agenda, and I did. And then all of a sudden, this came up, I don't know where it came up from.
No, I know you didn't request this.
Yeah, so you say that I brought something up, and now we should be talking, this was brought up by somebody else.
That's why it's a special meeting, why this is on the agenda has nothing to do with keeping that secret.
All right, and then as far as the, the, let's do it one more time. So that section that some of it has been added in the red or whatever, in the middle, it says honor before the November thirteenth school board meeting. So essentially, we're talking about in less than four months, we're gonna make these cuts.
No, 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 we're gonna identify the list, which will be included in.
Of this, some person, of whatever guy cuts.
Yeah, it'll provide, provide us an adopt specific net expenditure reduction for nineteen twenty. So earlier, I believe earlier in the resolution, that actually cuts, any cuts associated with this would need to be made in like, I believe, like January. You know, in terms of if there's any position reductions, reductions of particular kinds of services. This is just quantifying the list to go to the first interim, to be included in the first interim report. Is that what you said?
Specific net expenditure reductions. So the way I'm reading that is on November thirteenth, we're gonna say specifically where we're getting. And I'm just giving the public kind of the heads up, that's less than four months. We had these committees before, and I understand the survey questions weren't very good, the town halls were not very good. So once again, we let a whole year go by, and now we basically have less than four months, we're gonna make these deep decisions. So if we can get moving as fast as possible to get input from the public, because this is happening, and we need to be upfront about it. It just got delayed for a year, you know, we could have done this before, and it's just very frustrating to see it. Essentially, have a year go by, and then you get data, and then say the data is no good, which I somewhat agree with. So we need to move as quick as possible to get the public's input. It's just not ideal the way this went up.
If you're going to come up with a resolution, you're welcome. If you're gonna come up with a budget process, we have to be prepared. I really appreciate how difficult this is for everybody. We're going to try to be as open as we can. Jacob is right, this is not going to be a very pressing schedule. And I, you know, I'm sorry that it's, it's coming out that way, but we need to move on now to get on to what we actually called a special meeting for. So we need a motion, preferably along the resolution that's on the screen. We want to keep the county happy. We have a motion.
So I move that we approve the resolution as amended as shown here.
My second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, this moves us on. Thank you all for coming down, thank you for your interest in the budget, and do keep doing, we will be soliciting public input and talking about it probably at every board meeting between now and forever. So this brings us to the resolution. Requesting Albany City Council to remove the Albany High School District from the city charter.
Thank you, President White. So this item is for the board to review and approve, resolution two oh one eight one nine, actually, two, resolution requesting Albany City Council to remove the Albany High School District from the city charter. And currently, the, the school district is in the city charter, and Albany High School has its own school board, you have your own bylaws, and district staff that runs day-to-day operations of, of the district. Albany High is also governed by the California Education Code, as well as our own board policies. And so, the board wishes to relieve the city of Albany administrative process for governing the school board elections, to simplify procedures for the board, but it believes changes and elections are necessary. I bring forward this resolution and open, give it to the board for discussion on this.
Ross?
So I, I fielded a couple of those questions on Next Door about this. I, I was extremely awfully by the recommendation and the bias I'm hearing in the description of the, of the issue. This is the first time that this board has formally taken up the question of whether or not we should be in the charter. And it was precipitated by asking the city council to put a ballot measure out there on ranked choice voting and having them say no. If we were not in the city charter, we would be managing this ourselves. Because we're within the city charter, we defer to the, or we request of the city these sorts of actions. But this is our first public discussion, and when I see a recommendation of to review and approve resolutions come out of blue from my perspective. And here, you know, the board wants, because the board hasn't thought of this, nor, nor, you know, et cetera. So I, I think we walked into a, an open question of the wisdom of having us remain in or out of the charter with pretty severe bias towards, towards an outcome that I don't know as I necessarily support. So I'd rather say, let's talk about it now, as the first time this board is talking about it in open, public session.
I wonder, Jacob, would you like to kind of, why you wanted it, this special meeting, to have the agenda?
Um, yes, the reason I asked for this is, I don't know if people are aware, but we made two different resolutions, asking the city council to honor our request and let the voters decide if they wanted to put a ranked choice voting. On the first time we did it, the resolution wasn't very strong, it said we had a preference, they really acknowledged it. So I asked that we have another discussion, possibly strengthen our resolution, specifically say what we wanted done. And the city council had a meeting about it on July second, and they voted not to let us proceed. So it was my first kind of knowledge that we are not an equal body with the city council. You know, a lot of people have asked me, why aren't you guys independent? And I thought we were, but in certain situations, I guess, we have to go to the city council and ask for permission, and I understand that's the way that the city charter is set up, but it was a little disappointing. There's been some past practice, I guess, a couple of years ago, the school district wanted to issue a term limits law, and the city council disagreed with it, but they still let it proceed. So this time it got blocked, you know, and I was not okay with that. So I actually reached out to some of the council members and thanked the two council members who approved it or voted for it, even though it didn't pass. And the other three, I spoke to two of them, and one of them I tried to, and some of the responses I got were just a little enlightening and disrespectful. I asked one of them, well, going back and watching the meeting, you had said more than once that you wanted to honor our resolution, but you just couldn't do it. And I said, well, you know, how could you say that you want to honor something, but you didn't do it? And I was really surprised, the response was, well, you know, it's kind of like when a child asks their parents for something, and the parent knows it's not in the child's best interest. So the situation is kind of like that. And I said, really, so you're calling us children now? And the response was, no, I'm not calling you children, but that's kind of how the situation is. So I understand they have the authority to have to see with things, but to talk about this body like that is the reason I wanted to have this discussion. I'm not saying I want to have the city charter, as Ross said before, it's come up in the past. And I think it's great that we're having this discussion to kind of go over some of the pros and cons. And another council member I spoke to, basically, I asked her the same question about, you said you wanted to honor it, but you didn't. And her response was, well, you guys didn't really come prepared. And her response was, well, you guys didn't really come prepared, or else you didn't do your homework, you didn't come with the proper staff report, questioned me if we even spoke to legal counsel, and I looked at her and said, what do you think, we just did this willingly, that we didn't spend a lot of time, we sent you resolutions to you? So I understand the structure of the way things work, but to actually speak to me that way, I'm not saying we're speaking about the whole board that way, but the meeting on July second was also very dismissive to the school board in general, and one of the council members said, I want to get out of the city charter, go ahead and do it, you know. I'm not advocating for that necessarily, I'm just glad that we're having this discussion. So that's kind of what it came about.
Well, I think it would be relevant for somebody to, at least somewhere, is the legal opinion that the board has received, the printed copies, I don't know how many printed copies are issued lately, I don't really need to backlink.
Okay, so...
But I think it would be relevant for people to hear that information.
Okay, well, I can give some background information. There's a couple of legal issues here. One is the question about ranked choice voting. And Jacob is correct, that as things stand, we would need the city to approve the change to ranked choice voting, or at least approve putting the issue before the voters. If we were out of the city charter, it's not clear that we would be able to do it in the hall, because California Elections Code doesn't provide for ranked choice voting, and the board would be governed by the Elections Code and the things. Now, by 2020, this situation could have changed. The mayor, the equate, invited Ross and me, along with her, and the vice mayor, yesterday in fact, to see Nancy Skinner, the state senator, to ask her about California Voting Rights Act and ranked choice voting. The issue being that, I'm not sure everyone here is even aware of this, the California Voting Rights Act, which has been on the books for quite a few years, requires that the bodies such as school districts and city councils reflect the demographics of their community. And the only remedy that has been recognized by the courts, if this is not the case, is to go to five district elections. For a city like Albany, that would mean dividing Albany into five districts. And Albany doesn't have any recognizable, that I know of, at least ethnic boundaries within, so wouldn't be clear how those districts would be drawn. And it's not clear that that would change the ethnic makeup of either the school board or the city council, but it would make some lawyers a lot of money if they wrote this as a lawsuit. And this has been a pattern, it's been moving through the state from the south towards the north. Many, many cities and school districts have been sued, some of them smaller than Albany. And many that have tried to fight it have ended up spending huge amounts of money and losing. So ranked choice voting is seen as a possible remedy, but it has not yet been recognized. So Nancy Skinner was positive about the chance of changing the Voting Rights Act to provide other remedies, whether it's ranked choice voting, or an exemption for smaller cities, or whatever they might be. But she did not offer to be the water carrier for that issue, but she wouldn't support it if we did get a coalition together that, that was lobbying the legislature for it. So my take on that is that it's not unthinkable that by 2020, the next time there's an election that affects the school board, that the situation would have changed, and ranked choice voting might at that time be a viable. But today, it's not. The other issue is how does this city, how does this school district get out of the city charter? What happens then? And there is a provision in Ed Code, as far as the city's concerned, it would be fairly simple, they would just cross out part of the city charter that creates the school board. When that happens, according to Ed Code, the school board is immediately dissolved, and new one is appointed by the county superintendent of schools. That conversation with the county superintendent of the class, who's very wary of doing anything that the voters wouldn't approve of, so she would almost certainly just appoint the people who had already elected, because that's the surest way to be sure that the voters would approve her appointments. Beyond that, we end up being able to find a lawyer who has ever been through this process, we haven't been able to find it in school district, in states that have this before. Most school districts are not created by city charter, so it doesn't come up for anyone. Ed Code provides for school districts to be created under city charters, but the only Ed Code provisions that are listed as being overwritten by city charter are the ones having to do elections. Everything else about school district is independent of the city. City can't decide if the mayor will be the board president or anything like that. It's not within the city's powers, sorry, powers to, to try to control the school board in any way other than setting the time for elections and what goes on with that. That's pretty much what I know about it.
Because I heard some confusion on this, when Paul says that the board can be dissolved and the county superintendent of schools would appoint a replacement, subsequently you would have elections. So it's basically, there's no school board, okay, let's put one back, and then in the next election cycle, you would have something that conforms to Ed Code's guidance on elections. And one of the concerns is that Ed Code doesn't speak to ranked choice voting, it just talks about election, like plurality, there are, or there are several variations, none of which is any better, I think, than what we have now. So we would have even, I think, less latitude to try to have ranked choice voting than we currently enjoy. And the other concern I have, and there's another letter from the city manager to the effect that doing something, if we'd say now, in the November election seems impossible, given constraints on legal guidance and all sorts of other hoops to jump through, recognizing that things are going on in the November ballot in under a month, there is, I would say, no window for this current election cycle, apart from all of the issues that we really have to address.
So I think for the benefit of people who haven't seen this letter from our attorney, I'd like to just read the last two sentences. It's a two-page legal analysis of Ed Code and Elections Code, and there's a lot of detail here, but I think the last two sentences that summarize the conclusions pretty much say it all. They read accordingly, it appears a district may establish ranked choice voting if it is under a city charter, and such charter permits ranked choice voting. In other words, if the city charter is not permitted to permit ranked choice voting, or if a district is not governed by the city charter, or other applicable exceptions provided under the law, it will likely be unable to utilize ranked choice voting. So I think I would just point out that the, our attorney's legal analysis is completely consistent with what Preston Jordan told us at a previous board meeting, that if we're not under the city charter, there's really no way that we could do ranked choice voting. So removing ourselves from the city charter would simply make it impossible to do the thing that we had hoped to do. It pretty much is clear that the method for moving to ranked choice voting is to amend the city charter to permit that being done. Now, the board and the council are of different minds on this particular question, and that's just the way it is. I think it's important to point out that the decision that the board made to pursue ranked choice voting was not based on the threat of legal action. We are aware that that threat exists, and that the only so-called state barter is to split an area into districts. However, our decision was simply predicated on the idea that ranked choice voting best expressed the will of the electorate, and we were willing to do that. So that is really what we are looking for, but if we're going to do that, we have to remain under the city charter, and the council has to move forward with amending the charter to permit that. So that's what I would hope that we would do, that the council would see fit to permit ranked choice voting for the Board of Education, which is the expressed will of the board. Again, I am repeating myself, but it seems to me repeating, that our decision not predicated on the legal threat posed by responses to the California Voting Rights Act, we understand that. Our decision was predicated on our sense that ranked choice voting best expressed the will of the electorate.
Well, I thank Charlie for laying everything out so clearly. I am a proponent of ranked choice voting. I do feel that it's what our voters deserve, and even if we cannot pursue that right now because the council's opinion differs from ours, I hope that we can do so in the future. I'm willing to wait it out. And what I would, what that means for me today is that I am not in favor of leaving the city charter. So I would vote against this resolution.
In light of the meeting yesterday here from Nancy Skinner, recognizing that things, amending state, state law is not a simple task, but recognizing that most school boards are probably not under city charters, I wonder if we as the board could take on the project to basically work through CSBA and see if we can get an Ed Code amendment. I mean, if an Ed Code amendment said, here's the latitude we'd like to grant school boards in the real elections, we could solve our problem in many other districts, give many other districts opportunity. And maybe that the city will pursue this as a city issue, and there are cities that are absolutely negatively affected by this, you know, when every, any tiny city has to break up into five districts, that's just crazy. But we as the school board could absolutely work through our own channels, and in fact, maybe addressing the larger community of schools that aren't under charters, and whether or not we're going to remain under one, that might be a great place to start a little bit of our block. I think that's it.
Yeah, the last couple of sentences that Charlie read from the lawyer, I agree with what he's saying, as far as if we can't do the last ranked choice voting, then we leave the charter. That's how it is right now, but with his current council, we can't do the last ranked choice voting either, because they blocked us, and if it comes back again, and the city council is the same after November, they'll just do the same thing, you know? So if we do leave, it would have to be on the state legislative side, where they could make a state barter exception for ranked choice voting, which is an awful lot of work. And I never said at the beginning that I was forced getting out, I just wanted to have this discussion. And something else that might have come up in the past, but hasn't come up, is if, my understanding is if we leave the charter, then we don't have term limits anymore. And I think we should have term limits, and I went to the voter a couple of, the voters a couple of years ago, and they overwhelmingly didn't want there to be no term limits, and so, you know, I'm just glad we're having this discussion, because there's a lot of ramifications, pros and cons, but kind of repeating myself a little bit, I just don't know if I want to be part of a body that can have somebody above us decide if they're going to take on the potential role, and decide what children should and shouldn't do, or to take on some kind of teacher role and say you didn't do your homework properly, like, so our resolution was a D minus, so therefore it didn't get passed. It just seemed a lot of not being upfront, to say you don't like it, or you don't want us to do it, but to sit there and kind of stand and have the authority to block us, and then be pretty disrespectful about it, that's where I kind of lean towards leaving, because I don't think anybody that's been elected by the public should have to have somebody else be able to stop with. Not what we wanted, what we wanted the voters to decide to do. They blocked the voters even having to say.
Is anyone...
My name... My name is Rochelle Mason. My name is Rochelle Mason, I'm the vice mayor. And I wanted to give you sort of a somewhat different perspective on a few things that have been said or that have appeared in documents that I've seen. One is, I saw that there was a report to you that the mayor and vice mayor do not want to change the voting method, and I wanted to offer a little correction to that. To my knowledge, neither the mayor nor I have taken any position on what the voting method ultimately should be. We certainly have not taken any position in opposition, well, I'm not speaking for the mayor, by the way, I can only speak for myself, but definitely have not said, I don't want ranked choice voting. The issue is, do I want to see ranked choice voting put on the ballot with the law standing as it is now? The concern is that by putting ranked choice voting on the ballot, we would draw undesirable attention, and the result of that would be, we would be forced into this, going to districts, and then there would be no pathway back. That's the concern. So our hope is that we can continue to work to try to change state law, and that there will be a change, a favorable change in state law. We don't know yet whether that's a realistic hope. We do know from our visit with Senator Skinner yesterday, that nobody has really worked on it. So we're trying to get that moving at the state level, and I think my perspective on her response might have been a little bit different from yours, Paul, but I thought she was very helpful and very welcoming of the discussion, and that, so I did not come away with a sense of discouragement about the possibilities at all. The other thing I wanted to say, that another portion of the report, I think this was from your June minutes, says, rather they, meaning the mayor and vice mayor, want to amend the city charter to remove the AUSD from the city charter altogether. That definitely, that definitely was a misunderstanding, if that's what your representatives heard, that we did not express anything of the kind, we really only asked, please start, if you don't want, if there is this unhappiness about the city council having to approve what you put on the ballot, then what you should do is go do due diligence on the idea of withdrawing from the charter. If you, if you, you might be able to get things that you want, or it might be a terrible idea. We didn't really, we didn't take a position on that one way or another, we just encouraged you to research it and get the information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you so much. Sure.
So you said at the beginning that you haven't taken a position against ranked choice voting, in a way you have, you have taken a position by blocking our requests, and not allowing the voters to have their voices heard. And as far as what was stated before by Board Member Blanchard, we're not concerned about the lawsuits, we care more about the best voting method for the electorate, and we wanted them to decide. And then once again, you stand up here and say, if we're just going to discuss leaving the city charter, you know, here being judgmental and saying that the board needs to do their to do their due diligence, you're making a lot of assumptions here that we don't know what we're doing, and it's not appropriate.
Well, there is a difference between supporting, between opposing ranked choice voting and not wanting to put ranked choice voting on the ballot. For example, one of the, because ranked choice voting may be a good result, putting it on the ballot before the law can be changed or before anyone has even tried to change the law could be a mistake that could actually be counterproductive to the result that you're trying to achieve. So if you see that difference, that it's a difference between wanting a thing and approving of a particular method for achieving that thing. And as for due diligence, I did not mean to be disrespectful or unkind in any way. I am actually an advocate of better relationships between the city and the school district. I've been an advocate for crossfire guards, you know, for the city paying for the crossfire guards, at least during this period when the school district is facing such financial issues. I think I pointed out to you, the city of Culver City has a wonderful kind of statement of joint, working together, the school district and the city council. I'd love to have us move in that kind of direction. I never meant to be disrespectful, but these issues, the issue of compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, the issue of the politics of changing the California Voting Rights Act, and the issue of leaving a charter, these are all very complex issues. And I don't see that you yet have the level of information you need to make the right informed decision. Thank you.
Yeah, just one more. The council meeting on July 2nd, the agenda item was about if you were going to have the city charter, and then they go to the voters. You guys turned it all into a debate about the merits of ranked choice voting. So you guys got way off the topic, and that's where I say it became judgmental. You threw, you guys voted that you didn't want to do it, that was fine. But then all of a sudden, just discussing if you should let our resolution pass, you guys took it upon yourselves to go ahead and decide if we knew what was best for our voters. And do you acknowledge that? I mean, that's what, that's what happened.
Well, I will acknowledge that I did come away with that meeting, from that meeting, with the sense that the board had not yet considered all of the issues, and it was not yet ready to make a specific request of us. I asked, you know, we received a propose, a proposal, it had some very specific things in it about how much money could be spent, you know, there were all kinds of details. And so I asked the person who was speaking, the school district, do you want this in, do you want that actual language on the ballot? And they said, I don't know. They didn't, they didn't have any insight. So what we would want to see, if you guys want to bring something to the council, and you don't want the council to mess with it, to change it, to, you know, what we'd want to see, I think, would be exact language that you are asking for, a staff report explaining the, what would happen if it passed, and a legal analysis from your lawyers explaining any legal implications that need to be taken into consideration. That, to my mind, would be the kind of due diligence you'd want to do if you bring this back to the council.
So next time if you want to proceed, we need to come ask you guys?
Pardon?
Next time you want to proceed on something different, then we should come ask you exactly what you want us to do. That's what I'm hearing. We didn't present a property.
Yeah, you should, you should make a very exact ask, this is exactly what we'd like you to do, and this is what our staff thinks, and this is what our lawyer says. Those would be sort of the basics. That's what we want when we make a decision for ourselves. We want the same from you.
Right, but you brought that up at the council meeting as well, too. I don't understand how you could look and say, I'm not sure what the ask is. The ask is very clear, and the resolution will let the voters decide. The ask wasn't very clear if we should get your permission or if you think it's okay. The ask was very clear.
No, I would spurge you.
The resolution wasn't clear about what we wanted done?
Well, I, when I asked, do you want this language in what is presented to the voters, the response was, we don't know, we don't have that.
Let the voters decide then, if they didn't want to proceed.
Voters have to actually be given some language. You can't just say that the voters, you know, write in what you would like the charter to say, you're not going to get to the charter.
That wasn't the final product, and you know that. If you guys stood up to the voters, something else was attracted, that would have been clear.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I was the board member president at Edward. Among the things I would have said there is that I did not, I was not a delegate of the board, I was a board member. My authority in speaking at the city council meeting is as a board member, absolutely would have said that was the request, the ask, which I think was pretty clear and concise. We are not the body that puts anything on the ballot, though. So the question of how the city chose to interpret what we presented in forming a ballot measure, which entirely then the city's right to interpret what they thought they were hearing from us, I think what we were requesting was actually pretty clear. I wouldn't speak, presume to speak for the council and its attorneys, but I think it was pretty clear. I would say, you know, and my presence there was as the school board member at a city council meeting, not a delegate of the board, charged to interpret on the fly.
No, I understood that, and that's why I didn't name you Ross, I'm sorry. There wasn't anybody present speaking for the school district who I could ask the question. But the question was, do you want this language that was in what you presented to us, do you actually want that in what is presented to the voters? And I couldn't get, you didn't have an answer.
I was authorized to say what you wanted.
No, I realize that, but next time, again, exact language, your staff's analysis, your attorney's analysis, and ideally sending somebody to represent the school district, someone who can answer questions, that would be helpful to you.
Well, there's an issue of can't answer questions or has the authority. I don't think you can send a school board member unless they have been granted a charter of, yes, you can make decisions for the board on the fly, I don't know how that works.
I'd agree. If we were to do it, I think if the council were to request something with the school board, we would send the city manager to talk to you. Possibly the mayor, but.
But our superintendent only has so much authority that she can't answer to the board either. So as a relevant aside, you kicked around the idea, at least on this end, of having a joint city council, school board meeting, say, once a year, not specific to this issue, but specific to the areas that we do overlap. We do meet quarterly, and there's these two-by-two-by-two meetings where the mayor, vice mayor, president, vice president of the board get together, but it may be useful to have, say, once, at least once a year, a meeting jointly of the city council and the school board, so as long as we're at least lashed at the hip through the charter. I would say absolutely in defense of having been a former federal employee, in defense of staff, I think it would be a hugely useful thing not to surprise staffs with insufficient time to react on things. I think us coming to you when we did was very short order, was not acknowledging that talking to the lawyers on the school side, presenting something to the lawyers on the city side, iterating a bit, but not forever, is the much better way to have issues raised. I think we may have started getting off the rails the first time there was a request of this, and as we saw Gregory Buffett of this, and then it eventually became what it did.
Well, let, to end this on a positive note, I certainly agree with the idea of having a joint meeting once a year. I think that sounds like something very well worth exploring, that's one positive thing. And I think that, you know, it really does appear that there may be room to get something done in secriment, if the right people can get involved. I don't think it's something that Albany alone can or should do, but if organizations that are enthusiastic about ranked choice voting, and organizations that are concerned about the negative impacts of going, of forcing everyone to go to districts, if those kinds of organizations can be activated on the issue, I think that we might end up with a good outcome here, a change in the law that would give everybody the chance to do, to have the election system that they'd like to have. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, council president, I appreciate your comment. I want to talk about sort of the meta-issues going on here. The board received an email from the city man, from the city manager, talking about the November 2016 ballot, where there was a measure to eliminate term limits for the board of ed. And the email states, the city council authorized placement on the ballot, and city's legal council is obligated to prepare all materials related to the matter, including the impartial analysis of the ballot language. We were asked to review and give analysis, and, oh, we asked for review and analysis from the board of ed and/or AUSD's affiliated legal counsel, but the request was not met. Our staff worked on this ballot measure, as it seemed to be fairly straightforward, da-da-da-da-da, but I feel that there has been a failure of communication between the board and the city council. So today, we've heard council member Mason state that what the council expects to see is exact ballot language, they expect to see a staff report with steps in the timelines, I guess, and a lawyer's statement with analysis of the issue. And they didn't get that before the November 2016 election, and they didn't get it now either, and they pushed back. I just want to bring up, Ross just mentioned, the two-by-two-by-two meetings, and also I believe that our superintendent meets on a monthly basis with the city manager, and I know that our superintendent has a relationship with the mayor. So somehow, there's been a failure of communication, there didn't need to be this failure. There is ample opportunity for contact, there's ample opportunity for these sorts of expectations to be conveyed, and this doesn't have to be thrashed out on the floor of a public meeting where unfortunate things get said. I do have to, I do have to say that I have, I have heard several comments from the city council that seemed very paternalistic. One of them in open session, that, you know, the wool had been pulled over the eyes of the school board, and that we were falling for somebody's line about ranked choice voting. Our integrity and our intelligence has to stand on their own, but I have felt insulted by comments made by the city council, and I wish that it hadn't gotten to that point. I hope in the future, we can work together more cooperatively and communicate through the existing channel, and maybe even open up new channels of cooperation. We're a small city, we all have the best intentions for our residents, and we need to, we need to be responsible in pursuing those. Thanks.
So with apologies in advance, this is going to sound a little harsh, but I'd like to offer a different perspective, which is that I don't think the issue has anything to do with how much analysis we have provided, how much background information we have provided or not provided. We've heard here today, and we have heard previously from council members, that the concern on the part of the council is drawing attention to Albany. That is, we don't want to risk the threat of the California Voting Rights Act lawsuit, and if we put ranked choice voting on the ballot, that might draw attention to the fact that we haven't split ourselves into districts. So I think that's the real issue, is that fear of drawing attention to Albany, and then the fear of being forced into complying with the almost safe harbor in the California Voting Rights Act, which is splitting districts. And we did hear that today. I think that's the real issue, and I appreciate that, now, I do appreciate council's concern for that. There's really no, nothing positive to be gained, I don't think, by splitting Albany into trustee districts. So I'm glad we agree on that. But I think it's a red herring to say that we haven't carried the analysis. The charter review committee has done analysis, the board has talked about this for months. We've passed resolutions asking the city to move forward on it. I don't think there's anything to be gained by putting more time into more analysis. I think the council's real concern is to avoid drawing attention to ourselves. So there's nothing we can do that will, that will, I think, change that situation. There's no reason to do any more analysis. So I do appreciate that concern to, to avoid that litigation, to avoid the consequences. I think it's a mistake. I think it's paralysis. I think the fear of lawsuits paralyzes us, and just being afraid to take an action effectively is giving somebody else veto power. So I, you know, again, I'm going to say, I appreciate the concern, I hope that we're not so afraid of lawsuits that we fail to take action.
Hi, my name is Louise Barham, I'm a Albany resident, and I, in the past, I served on the PTA board here at Cornell, and I'm a parent at high school here at Cornell. And I have to say, I haven't been to a meeting in a while, and I really do appreciate your time and effort you put into this, because this is painful. What I really do urge you, though, to think about is, it's not acceptable, and it's not appropriate, to call an emergency meeting with 48-hour notice where people who are active in their Albany community cannot attend, and to be blunt, shouldn't have to attend. This is not a productive use of time. And while I can appreciate and understand that there's challenges with communication with city council, and perhaps some people have not expressed things as eloquently as they should have, and requests may have been made appropriately, those things really should not be requiring that any of us are sitting here today. I, in my concern for my community, reached out to several people, and all of them wanted to be here today, and I'll read a couple of quick comments from just a few of the many people who wanted to be here but couldn't. I have Fridays off, generally like to take a yoga class during this time, but you have my time. From Sarah Marcellino, parent at Albany High School in Cornell, there is simply too little information right now to place the resolution to remove from the charter on the November ballot, especially lacking community engagement. From Angel Chen, parent at Cornell School, I'm one of those who cannot make it, and quite honestly, I can't make heads or tails out of this, there's not much info as provided. From Jeff Nagafugi, parent at Cornell, I would have liked to have attended the meeting, nor the timing of the meeting, but it makes it impossible to do so. And from Tammy Rasmussen, I've been monitoring these budget cuts and AUSD's response, this is a terrible time to hold a meeting if the community, if they wanted community input, there was not a lot of notice. Palani Garcia, parent of Albany High School, Cornell, the resolution being considered concerns me, not necessarily because it is a negative for the community, but simply because others and I and the Albany community have not had time to fully understand how the repercussions of such a change could affect our children's educational future. I've also heard from other people that there is a potential that, while you mentioned something like this were to happen, that they might just put the same board back in place, because, no offense, who else wants your jobs? But I don't. However, there's also a concern that maybe it's just some random person from Sacramento who's going to be sitting here, who doesn't know Albany the way all of us do. And so I really, I really do genuinely close on the note of thank you for your time and involvement in our community, but I really do beseech you to make sure that all things are moving forward with communication and being as selective and thoughtful as possible about a special session like this. especially on a Friday in July. And my biggest concern with that is because I wouldn't want the community to be like, oh, another special session. We don't have to pay attention to that. And then it becomes a void crime wolf and that will people really do need to fill this room with doubt.
Thank you so much.
Jacob?
I just wanted to respond, respond briefly to that. I did not anticipate that this was going to be review and action. I've heard over the discussions that this has been a topic that I've been brought up for years. So it's just the first step. I know it's under review and action, but I, at this point, wouldn't promote us taking a vote on it. I was still surprised that it came up as review and action and I don't necessarily think it needs to be voted on today. I agree with you. The timing was not the greatest. I mean, summertime on a Friday at noon, I, I get that. But I was a little surprised when I saw it come up as review and action. So I don't think that we should vote on this today.
Thank you. Next slide.
Thank you for taking up this discussion. Quite interested in the idea of a joint session between the board and the council being suggested. You may not be aware that that is, I think, the charter committee asked for back in the beginning of the year. Whoever resents the agenda for the council decided, no, we'll not have a joint session. We will not have a joint workshop. We will put this on our regular agenda and we can deal with it under our normal agreement and comment on the period, which is not in good format for dealing with an issue such as election methods and the research the charter committee had done over a period of five years. So that opportunity for communication was decided against for whatever reason by the council and what that reason was. Some other things that have been discussed or not mentioned is that if the board leaves the charter, it will double the cost of running elections. It will double the charges on the registrar of voters to both the school districts and the city. So it'll increase the cost cumulatively of both. Seven thousand dollars, I believe. You often remember a bit. But right now, because the registrar views that both entities as essentially one entity for electoral purposes, the registrar provides charges for one charge. And if the school district is not in the charter, then the registrar view that the separate entities will charge each separately. As far as a lawsuit, the, what most jurisdictions do receive a threat, well, current, current state law requires that plaintiffs who are contemplating filing suit against a jurisdiction have to first provide notice of a threat, a lawsuit. Those jurisdictions then have approximately 180 days, first state law, to make the transition to by district or by trustee area elections. Jurisdictions that do that are limited to loss of $30,000. So it's not inevitable that if ranked choice went on the ballot, there would be a lawsuit by means. Should the threat letter be sent, then Albany would just have to do what other jurisdictions have to do. It's also been stated that if we went to by district or by trustee areas, there would be no way back. I don't know the legal basis for that. If there has been a proposal to get state law changes, state law changes, then there would be a way back. So it's no different than what has been proposed, which is to change state law. I have not heard either the council or the mayor state that they are in support of ranked choice voting, that they are in support of ranked choice voting as a solution to the problem that is addressed by the California Voting Rights Act. I have not heard that our senator will carry water on this. So this is a very long haul to try to get state law change if we don't have our senator being willing to sponsor legislation, we don't have a firm commitment from our mayor and vice mayor that they're going to try to get ranked choice to state law. Thank you very much.
Thanks. The issue today, of course, is not ranked choice voting. It's about removing the school district from the city charter. Although that is an issue that's related. That's what the project is.
Jessica Cross again. Um, I just wanted to say, I think I've heard today here persuades me of the urgency of doing this. It seems a little drastic. It seems sudden and it seems like it has the potential to, A, introduce chaos at a time when we're just talking about, uh, us facing these drastic cuts and we would be introducing this other big change. And I worry about the administrative burden and, uh, the board's time and energy being diverted into this management of this charter removal issue, which I haven't heard anything that persuades me, whether you support ranked choice or not, that it would be a great time to suddenly throw this kind of wrench into the works. Um, as, uh, Kim said earlier, like, perhaps, whether, you know, if you do support it, you could be willing to work with the state to change the law.